All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to County Commission Meeting, regular meeting for Thursday, July 25, 2013. I'll ask everybody if they could please to put their communication devices on stun. And I do that so I remember to do it myself. This morning, we have Pastor Brian Di- Di- Dida?
Dida.
Okay, got it right, thank you. Pleasant Home Baptist Church with us this morning, lead us in prayer, followed by that, I'll ask Commissioner Melvin, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our country's flag. Pastor.
Thank you, Chairman. Everyone in attendance, let us pray. Lord Jesus, thank you that we live in a wonderful country and we live in a great county. And, Lord, I pray that you would give these gentlemen and women, Lord, the knowledge, the wisdom to correctly handle these situations, everything before them, that be for the betterment of this country, betterment of this county, and the people that live in it. Lord, we ask for your guidance today, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, appreciate that. This time, I'll move for approval of the minutes of the July 11, 2013, regular meeting, and I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. I'll start now to my right with Commissioner Williamson, and ask if there's any changes to today's agenda.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Salder.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Melvin.
No change, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynchard.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, anything from staff?
Mr. Chairman, if I could note that I don't, the, never, have not received the final cost information from HOK Incorporated, so I'd like to pull that if we could. That's number one on the Administrative Committee. Would like to come back to you with that at the next meeting also. We will work with staff, and I think the next step that we need to do is to come back to y'all with some kind of, at least, broad-based analysis of potential locations and where you men will look at that, so kind of to keep us moving, moving forward. But number one will come off the agenda. I would note that, and I think you've seen copies of each of these, the eight, nine, and ten had been added, and they're really pretty ministerial matters, just, you had seen the emails and the matters, and we can discuss those as you need.
All right. Thank you for that, and I do appreciate us keeping, moving forward on discussions of the judicial center and site locations for that, it's very important. I do have several items. I just returned from the National Association of Counties meeting, and I thank Commissioner Melvin for vice chair, or chairing the meeting on Monday, and in my absence. So I got one item that I'd like to add as a, just a add-on item to number two. And then I have an item that I'd like to add is item number 12, which would be a discussion of the Biggar waters act. And I've had staff pass out information on that to you. And then just informational on, is number 13, on three different items that we discussed in length at the National Association of Counties meeting, just bring everybody on board with that, so. All right, we'll move now to Commissioner Salder for Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Salder.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any items, I'll just remind everyone that we continue to work on the site certification, which is our industrial parks. We'll have a meeting on August the first to get more serious about that process, and also, yesterday morning, we were at Whiting Field to continue to celebrate Whiting's 70th anniversary. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salder. Item number one, under Administrative Committee, has been struck, so we'll move to item number two, is recommend contract with the Navar Beach Turtle, excuse me, Navar Beach Sea Turtle Convention Conservation Center Incorporated, allocating $70,000 from District Four Recreation Funds for the development of the Navar Beach Sea Turtle Conservation Center. Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is probably the most anticipated project on the beach. The sea turtles are a unique asset to this part of the world. I'm told there are seven species, and we have five that nest with us, and are efficiently known as the sea turtle lady, Kathy Holmes, is here today, she may have something she wants to add. But she and her group have worked very hard, I have satisfied money within my account to help this project along, and it's a matching situation, so it's not like we're just doling out, and they've worked very, very hard and are entitled, based on our original agreement, to more than the 70,000 at this point in time. So this is a reflection of the hard work of an awful lot of volunteers, led by the very capable Ms. Kathy Holmes. Ms. Holmes, do you have anything you want to add to this before we go ahead?
Only one minute.
You need to come to the- Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Holmes, 3525 Ginger Lane, Navar, Florida. Only that, based on what Commissioner Melvin said, without county support and community support and the volunteers that we have had, we would never be where we're at today in this short period of time. And we're ready to, we had a lot of people come through, we're open for a little while this week, just from 10 to 1, we've already had lots of people come through. We need the addition, we need the pool, we need turtles. So, thank you very much for your support.
Mr. Chairman, and we have had our tourists coming through, are actually looking for a place to place donations, so we've recommended that she do one of those Plexiglas things, like you see at the Naval Aviation Museum when you come through the front door. But all that aside, Mr. Chairman, if there's no other discussion or comments from the Board, I'd like to move this for approval, without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thought this would be a good place to add on to this, and Kathy, you may be able to help me out with this. I caught part of Channel 15's news last night, and we, as combined states, as a community, are spending federal and state tax dollars building artificial reefs to build infrastructure for sea life. We, as a county, got penalized for killing a sea turtle during our beach renourishment that cost us probably almost $200,000 in delays, $100,000? One, okay, Roger, throw, okay, it cost us a million dollars in delays and shutting down the project and restarting the project and inconvenience, because we killed one turtle over our quota, which is, we shouldn't have done, but it happened, you know, it's a big project, and we certainly didn't do it intentionally, but it happened. But the federal government said, okay, guys, shut her down, let's, let's get, let's regroup. Last night on Channel 15, and I'm gonna look more into this, there's a program right now going on called Idle Iron. We're off the coast of Louisiana, Alabama, Mississippi, there's multitudes of abandoned oil rigs that aren't hurting a thing, but they've become artificial reefs over the years for sea life. This Channel 15 reporter got involved in this and took a diver down, a cameraman down, and showed all the sea life on the legs of these construction platforms, how it's flourishing down there, showed probably 200, 300-pound protected Warsaw grouper. You know, anybody that's been underwater has seen how sea life attracts to these type things, that's why we're putting out artificial reefs. But now, they've come up with this plan that because they're ugly sticking up out there, no environmental problems with them, it's just they're ugly, they're cutting them down and exploding what's left of these platforms, killing tons of sea life. The spotter for this, before they detonate, flies over in a helicopter. I don't know about you, but I don't know how many people can see fish underwater, or turtles, or anything underwater from a helicopter, and they detonate these platforms. The report was real good, because it showed all the fish floating on the surface, and in result of that, that report, Congressman Bonner's got involved and slowed this process down, and the comments were that, you know, this is gonna be a continuing report, bring it to the public's attention, and the report also said that Congressman Bonner had support from Florida. And I just, I feel like it wouldn't hurt for us to possibly do a letter to Congressman Miller as a board, supporting some sort of changes in that, called the Idle Iron Program or Act, and, and see what the common sense is being used here, because if we get shut down and cost us a million dollars for a sea turtle in Santa Rosa County, how does our federal government get away with allowing thousands of fish, sea turtles, dolphin, whatever it happens to be in the area, getting killed, and there's no, no answer to it? So, I'd like to, I'd like to at least launch something off to Congressman Miller, you know, supporting Congressman Bonner. Congressman Bonner's short time now, so if somebody don't pick this up after him, or feel strong enough about it, it could die on the vine and it'll go back to what they're doing right now, so. I don't know if you've heard anything about that, Kathy, if you could, if you'd add to that, but my suggestion's gonna be, and I'm gonna make a motion that we draft a letter to Congressman Miller, and-
I, I would like to say that the best way to get this going is community action. When you have your draft letter, you have people emailing, you have people clogging up their fax machines, saying, "We don't want this happening." I don't, I don't know where rules, how, who the people are that make the, I think it's U.S. Fish and Wildlife, when it comes to the dredging and the beach renourishment process on incidental take of turtles or any kind of threatened or endangered species, but I do know, and I'm sorry that happened with you guys, but it, they will shut you down, and there are, you know, you lose a lot of money by having that happen. And hopefully, if beach renourishment starts next year, we're gonna be more involved in that, and we'll be able to help a little more with that monitoring. But as far as the rigs go, I agree, they, they do have a tendency to just build unbelievable reef systems, get a lot of diversity as far as sea life, and if they don't like how they look, you know, I agree, cut the tops off, but get community, community involved in that. I think a letter is an excellent idea.
And that's the reason I brought it to the Board this morning, just to get it out on the internet, get it out to the public. Certainly, everybody could go to Channel 15's website, I think, and probably see, you know, see the reporting, you know, I'm sure it's on the, on their website, so.
Yeah.
I'd like to just get everybody involved, get everybody on, on the same page on this thing.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, without objection, I'd like to ask, you know, did that be done?
I'd like to read the bill before I-
And I'm not sure it's a bill, it could be just a, you know, like, like you say, I just-
About Bonner submitted a bill?
It could be something under mining or something like that, but yeah, I'm glad to maybe bring it back next time with a little more information, but the main thing today was just get everybody aware that that's going on, and we'll take another look at it. Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate that. All right, we'll move on now to item number three, is recommend TDC grant allocation the amount of $50,000 to support the Marine, Navar Marine Science Center Program as recommended by the Tourist Development Council. I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item four is recommend waiver of fee for children under 12 at Navar Beach Fishing Pier during the month of October for kids' fish-free event as part of the Beaches to Woodlands Tour. This has really become a big part of the tour, and I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item five is recommend use of the Navar Park for the 19th Annual Christmas in the Park Jingle Fest sponsored by the Navar Beach Area Chamber of Commerce, Saturday, December 7, 2013. I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item six is recommend annual designation of surplus property for the disposal by clerk of courts. I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item seven, recommend addition of a voluntary long-term disability policy at no cost to the county as recommended by Director of Human Resources and Employee Benefits Group. Do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item number eight is recommend Family Fun Kite Festival on Navar Beach, Saturday, October 12, 2013, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., in conjunction with Beaches to Woodlands Tour. Do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item nine, recommend renewal of RMS Timberlands LLC lease, license lease agreement for removal of clay and dirt material at Cannon and Gomillion excavation pits. Do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item 10 is recommend proposal from LNG Land Clearing in the amount of $16,000 for the cutting trees encroachment penetration, the FAA regulated approach slope at Peter Prince Airport. Do so without objection. Commissioner Melvin?
Just point of clarification, mine reads proposal from CNG, is yours different?
It does. No, no, sir, CNG.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Correction on that, is C and G Land Clearing. And I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item 11, there are meetings, and unless otherwise noted, the meetings will be held in the boardroom in the Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. Those meetings are listed on your sheet, in a hard copy, and also on the internet. Any changes will be posted on the internet at the county website, so if you have interest in any of those meetings, please make a note of that. I'm past the meeting dates without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item number 12 is a conversation that I put as an add-on, if you look at, it's called the Proposed Resolution on Biggar Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act and FEMA Mapping Procedures. It came to our attention through the representatives from Louisiana, that the Biggers Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act could actually put people out of their homes. It'd be a shame for people that have built two specifications, two ordinances, to, to the degree of a home that falls within a flood program, to build that home or business, and then have the federal government just overnight change the cost. The background changes made to the NFIP in the Biggar Waters Act of 2012 threaten to harm the very citizens the program was designed to protect. Drastic premium increases will threaten all the coastal and riverine America as new FEMA flood maps are unveiled in the upcoming years. Through the passage of the Biggar Water Flood Insurance Reform Act, and it's got some public law stated there, signed into law by President Obama on July 6, 2012, the NFIP was revised such as public trust and reliance on the program to provide affordable flood insurance protection for the prior investment in their homes and businesses were essential, essentially discontinued with no practical alternative providing for this passage substantially and immediately devaluing the investments made in all properties through a drastic increase in the cost of flood insurance and other, all other properties in the area. In some cases, premiums are increased to over $28,000 for homes and $100,000 for businesses for policyholders that have never had floods. This will severely impact county governments, as property values will plummet and tax bases will erode. I just ask that the rest of the Board of Commissioners and folks that are interested in this, please take a look at this, and we'll bring it back possibly at our next meeting for resolutions supporting some of this. What NACO's take on this was to at least see them reinstate the grandfathering ability of this, so that people that are currently in homes or businesses that have flood insurance aren't penalized. Everybody expects their insurance rates to go up a little bit every year, perhaps. This is just like an overnight change, it's not, you know, through non-grandfathering. Some of the examples were given, if a person's in a home that's only been, you know, purchased it two or three years ago, sees this drastic of an increase, they could just abandon that payment and, and let the home be repossessed or go into foreclosure, same way with businesses, or possibly people that were considering building in these zones, when they find a change in the cost of flood insurance, may not, may not build there, and that's where they come up with a deterioration of the tax base. So, NACO's stand on this was to support the, at least, grandfathering current, current homes, and certainly suggest that they take a more sensible approach on, on the increase in premiums. So I'll open it up now, any discussions? Mr. Chairman. Commissioner?
Thank you, sir, thank you for bringing this back to us. This has tremendous, the potential for tremendous impact on the state of Florida, and suggests that, once we've had time to absorb this, we do a resolution and include the governor of state of Florida and our congressional representatives as well, and I will take this to the Florida Association of Counties Policy Group Meeting in September, and make sure that it gets on the radar of all 67 counties in the sovereign state of Florida, because it's just almost impossible to get far enough away from water in this state to not need flood insurance. So this has the potential for wreaking havoc on the state of Florida.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I would ask, in the meantime, we may wanna get a response from Congressman Miller's office, since it is a federal issue, and just get his take on it as well.
Okay, all right. Well, it was an important enough item, I wanted to bring it to the Board as soon as I could, and get us, you know, get our, get our feet under this thing, so really, no action taken, other than if we, we may look for it to be on our next agenda, so. All right, item number, item number 13 is just information, again, from the National Association of Counties. Vote was through several of the subcommittees to support not attacking and keep municipal bonds in place, we continue to make that a priority. I moved that from not just the Budget Committee to also the Environmental, Energy, and Land Use Committee. When you're at these national meetings, there's resolutions in each different subcommittee, and you can do what they call capture that resolution and move it to your committee if you see there's a good enough reason to. I only have one other commissioner from the state of Utah that questioned why energy, environment, and land use would add this to our agenda on municipal bonds, and didn't have, I didn't even have to speak, other people, other commissioners, it reminded him of how many environmental, energy, and land use projects are funded through municipal bonds. So, it passed unanimously, and it's in that committee also, and so that will be one of the agenda items that we task our lobbyists in NACO with. Also, total maximum daily load through the EPA. Roger, you've talked to us several times on some of the new rules and regulations, and how costly that could be to the state of Florida, and NACO's take on that was for the EPA to go back and revisit that and come up with some common sense, cost, cost-effective ways to dealing with this. I talked to a commissioner from Forest County, Mississippi, that have basically about $20,000, 60,000 people in their entire county, only about 20,000 that contribute to the tax base, and they're looking at a $300 million bill to redo some lagoons up there, that EPA won't allow them just to dredge out the current lagoons as they've been doing, and it's just, there appears to be no common sense use by EPA when they come to writing these rules and implementing these rules when it comes to the dollars and cents part of it. So, that's one of the things that Commissioners tasked NACO with doing also, is carrying that back to the Hill and getting that corrected. And the final item I'd like to bring to the Board this morning, I sit on the Arts and Culture Subcommittee also with NACO, and since that came up in discussion a few weeks ago about a building that we provided with arts and culture, I brought back a bunch of information that I'll make available at the front counter about arts and culture, its contribution to economic development, education, and, I mean, there's dozens, dozens of counties out there that would love to have a building to put their Arts and Culture Council in, but also dozens that have already taken old firehouses, schools, post offices, and turn them into arts and culture facilities, because of its importance to our communities and society as a whole. So, I feel real happy, I guess, or nothing else, with our decision that we made to provide it.
Asking is a good word. It sounds pretty cool.
Well, appreciate that, thank you. But if you got any more comments, you'll do, you need to come up to the podium, though, if you got any more comments. Thank you. So, it is important, it's a quasi-governmental agency, I thank Commissioner Williamson for moving that forward a year ago, so. That's pretty much all the report I have, coming from NACO, and so we'll end now with the Administrative Committee. Moving now to Engineers Report. Item number one is recommend change order number one in the amount of $9,039.35 to contract with Berkshire Jones Incorporated for construction of the Tagger Point Community Center, as recommended by Stowe Architects. Move that without objection. Commissioner Lynchard, got any comments?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great project, Commissioner Lynchard, thank you for moving that forward, and it's gonna be another outstanding resource in our county, so. All right, I'll move that without objection, hearing none, it passes. And we'll turn now to Commissioner Lynchard for Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend annual contracts with Florida Division of Emergency Management for Emergency Management Performance Award, EMPA, grant in the amount of $105,806, and Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, in the amount of $72,707, and authorize execution of all relevant documents. I'll move approval without objection. Item two, recommend subordination of mortgage for ship loan on property located at 6409 Lindwood Circle, consistent with Board policy. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three, recommend subordination of mortgage for ship loan on property located at 5685 Eagle Drive, consistent with Board policy. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four, recommend acceptance of $1,000 for short sale in lieu of foreclosure for property located at 5473 Mulat Road. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item five, recommend 2013 Escambia Home Consortium- Item five, recommend 2013 Escambia Home Consortium Annual Action Plan for Housing and Community Development and authorize execution of relevant documents. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item six, recommend State Housing Initiatives Partnership Ship Annual Report and authorize execution of relevant documents. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes Public Services.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynchard. This time we'll move to Public Works Committee, Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have two items today. The first item is recommend amendment number one to the annual contract WS 779 with Florida Department of Corrections regarding term and compensation for one inmate, work squad, and supervisor, and I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
The last item today is recommend change order number four in the amount of $48,915.45 from Arrow Training and Rental Incorporated for Baghdad Wastewater CDBG Project due to inclement weather and scope changes funded by the City of Milton and the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and I move approval without objection.
Come on, you're kidding now, inclement weather? You're really kidding about the inclement weather, aren't you? Move that without objection.
I should've meant the 40-day flood.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll move now to Budget and Finance Management Committee, Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have three items this morning. Item number one is recommend bid in the amount of $646,126.50 from Panhandle Paving and, Panhandle Grading and Paving Incorporated, for base bid and alternate number one for Spencer Field, Mini Russell Park Sidewalk Construction Project as low bidder, meaning specifications, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is recommend bid in the amount of $1,275,547 from the American Environmental Group for Phase 1 of the landfill gas collection and control system as a low bidder, meaning specifications, I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is recommend the county expenditures a check register, I reviewed the check register, satisfied myself with the questions, and sign it, put it on your desk, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval without objection.
Thank you, and we move that without objection, hearing none, it passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Melvin. All right, anything now from county administrator or staff? All right, okay, I'll open it now to public forum.
Loretta Aiken, 1-828-SUNDOWN-DRIVING-NAVARRE, FLORIDA. I went to the beach the other day with a friend, and I went down to the beach and then turned around and came back to the foot of the bridge, and I was on the southeast corner, and the gravel, I got out of my car and I almost went all the way down the hill because the gravel's real loose, I don't know that there's anything you can do about that. So I crossed the road and went to the southwest corner of the bridge, and when you come over the bridge, you can pull over and park on the shoulder, but there's a really bad gully there that's washed away, and I just think that, you know, maybe Commissioner Melvin wanna look at it and get with Road Department. I don't know, we've had a lot of rain, but it's very dangerous, if you pulled over late in the afternoon, close to evening, that car could just roll right on down into the, you know, seawall.
Let me interrupt you with a question for clarification.
Uh-huh.
There are two bridges on the field.
The first bridge coming out of Navarre.
The big bridge, at the base of the bridge, on the...
It's the big bridge.
The big bridge on the southeast corner.
It's the southwest corner is the worst one, yeah.
Southwest corner, okay, we've got it, and...
Sure.
Mr. Whitfield is present in the meeting, so that's now in the system, and what was the other?
Well, the southeast is just loose, like tourists go down there and they do their thing, and they step off on it, old people like me would go sliding downhill.
What do you mean like you?
But on the southwest, it's dangerous, it really is. And Mr. Andrazzi is new to the process, and he'll tell you, he's the one, yeah.
Mr. Melvin, may I ask you, are you got, yes, sir?
Name, name and address for the record, please.
Rick Andrazzi.
Address?
What was the other question?
The address, your address.
1939 Joe Tam Lane, Navarre, FL, USA.
Thank you.
Are you gonna be at the Commerce Meeting, Chamber of Commerce Meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll clear this up, because I'll take you for a little field trip, because what Ms. Loretta is talking about is so dangerous, you have no idea, and it's been like this for, I know, two years.
Did you bring your pictures, ma'am?
No, I didn't.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Commissioners Road and Bridge already have a work order.
They say you can look on Google Earth, and you can actually see it, I don't know.
All right, Loretta, thanks for bringing that to our attention, we'll get somebody out there and...
For clarification, Mr. Whitfield, do you have an old report on this, has this been an ongoing problem, or where are we with this exactly?
I know a work order's been recently issued, and we have plans to make the repair.
All right.
You don't know anything about a two-year-old problem?
No, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Melvin, Commissioner Melvin, I might suggest, if I would, maybe if, until we get it repaired, block it off.
We'll check and see if it needs to be barricaded off today.
Thank you. Sir, name and address for our record, please, sir.
Good morning, my name is Garland Lamar Neal, I live at 4877 Webb Circle. I have a nerve disorder. I have, my next-door neighbors are cooking drugs and selling drugs, and I need someone, I've called the police several times.
All right.
I have a son that lives in Dallas, Texas, he's a paralegal, and he told me to come out and let you guys know.
Okay.
The police haven't done anything. Mess has a smell as though ether, it's highly flammable, the house is less than 30 feet from mine.
Okay.
I am scared for my life, I have a nerve disorder, I lost my eye, the whole left side of my face in 1983, 30 years ago. I don't sleep at night, my nerves are very bad, and I need someone to either talk to somebody at the Sheriff's Department, or the DEA, or somebody, to get these people out of there. They rent, we, everybody else down there owns their house, and there was supposedly one of my neighbors here today, but undoubtedly the weather stopped her, I had to walk, I can't drive because I'm losing sight in this eye.
Yes, sir.
I have glaucoma cataract, and I'm a diabetic, and I cannot stand what's happening, it's bothering my nerves. Every time I call the police, they come down, she tells them that I'm upset with her about one thing, and that's not it. There were two officers standing there, and I asked them if they could smell the ether smell. I worked in a hospital for 10 and a half years, Santa Rosa, in the x-ray department. I worked in surgery several times, I know the smell. Also, I've got a friend, which he's dead now, and he used to sell drugs. He sold cocaine, I quit associating with him. His brother sold this meth, I know how it smelled because I was in his house one day, and I tried to explain this to the officer, and I, I just wanna know, who should I talk to? That's why I came here.
Randy, did you get this gentleman's address, full address?
No, I need to speak to him.
Okay, you'll fill out that form where we have the address, you've got two deputies here in the room, and we'll make sure...
I talked with one this morning, and I gave him some of the tag numbers that I have, that I've gotten.
Would you give us your address again, please, sir?
He's gonna fill out it. Ms. Jones?
I know that both the officers who are present this morning have made note of this, and I know that Officer Milton has actually already spoken with this gentleman, whose name I didn't catch, I apologize, but I'll follow up with him after the meeting also.
All right. Randy, did you get the, oh, she's getting it now, okay. Yep, we'll get that moved forward. All right, any other? All right, seeing none, then we are adjourned.